The United States Republic of America, one eighteen, under God, in the middle, eliminating the government.
Good evening, I first order of business, we have a special guest, Stephen DeLong, who happened to be the new commander for the VFW post down on one twenty-five. Step up, sir. See? So, I'm gonna pull that microphone close to you for the viewing audience at home.
Alright. Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak, uh, to you tonight, to introduce myself as the new commander of the Kingston post. Uh, my name's Stephen DeLong, I'm a current resident in Brentwood, New Hampshire, uh, married to my wife Lana, with an eighteen-year-old daughter Hannah, uh, originally from Westport Island, Maine, uh, twenty-five-year Air Force veteran, thirteen years active duty, and twelve years still serving in the Maine Air National Guard as a major.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Uh, grew up with my grandfather as the first selectman for the town until I left around nineteen ninety-three, I believe he served almost forty-something years as the first selectman of the town, about six hundred folks, so, come from a small town, I believe it is imperative, uh, as a member of the community, as a volunteer, and as a leader of a nationally-known organization such as that of the VFW local chapter, to build relationships with community's leadership, uh, whether it's the local government, law enforcement, uh, emergency response personnel that contribute to our, our towns. Um, I was voted into this position in June of twenty nineteen this year, as you know, uh, the post was kind of in arrears, had a for-sale sign, uh, little did I know the challenges that laid ahead, but, uh, I, I took 'em on, uh, head-on, and, uh, there's a sense of post pride with a lot of folks that are there, uh, auxiliary members, current post members pitching in when needed, and just trying to have that positive attitude, uh, to get them recharged, uh, because posts across America are, are failing, and, not because people don't wanna try, they're just, they just don't have the membership, so, uh, I was willing to give it a run, and, uh, wanna interact with veterans in the surrounding communities, um, we are also a charter member for the Boy Scouts, so we provide a place for them to, uh, hold their weekly meetings for free, um, we don't get anything out of that, except for trying to mentor some of the young, uh, women, uh, and, and men that are, uh, part of this organization, and I was a Boy Scout too as well, growing up, so, definitely support that. Um, even when financial outcome, uh, we're trying to get in the, uh, black, so to speak, uh, we've still been able to provide funds to some local area veterans, Epping, we, uh, gave a gentleman that's in the Navy, was in the Navy, a hundred dollars to buy some wood, um, we, we've donated to Trees for Troops, um, and there's multiple, uh, programs, uh, that the VFW provides money for charities, uh, too many to list here, but, um, regardless of our situation, we're still providing, uh, that type of service to our, our folks, so, um, we've also succeeded in removing the for-sale sign, I think that was one of my first, uh, things, so we could start renting the hall, getting a little bit more, uh, revenue, uh, to, to help fix up the facility, uh, and then provide for more events, uh, that are, um, community, um, based, uh, more family-style events, I, I know that some folks think of the old dank VFWs as the smoky, uh, barroom, I, obviously, the canteen helps provide some revenue, but, um, uh, I think a lot of the veterans these days are looking more towards the family-style events, the healthier events, so that's something that I would like to bring to the community. Um, I also wanted to publicly thank the Kingston's Lions Club, uh, they assisted us with a fundraiser, uh, when we were kind of down around zero, uh, you know, in the bank account, they, they raised a thousand dollars for us, uh, and it, and it was, it outpouring, uh, just over joy with, well, uh, what can you say, uh, it, it got us kind of on our feet and kick-started us to where we need to be, so, I just wanted to come here tonight, welcome any and all support from the town of Kingston, the surrounding communities, and I just, uh, wanna say I look forward to working with you, um, and meet you, I, I believe it's, uh, my responsibility as the commander to do that, um, there's a lot of changes coming within the VFW, a lot of the younger folks, I'm probably one of the youngest, uh, not to talk about age, you know, commanders in the state of New Hampshire, um, and I, I just hope, uh, we can, uh, forge a partnership, uh, with the post, so, that's all I have to say, unless you have any questions from, for me.
Well, I have to thank you for taking on the challenge, it was disheartening of me to see the for-sale sign, um, I didn't know what was gonna happen, I'm glad to see it is down, so the meat rolls and meat raffles will continue.
Raffles are still helping out, we've had a few events, we've had a Jeep Fest, um, we've had other, uh, we've got the Buddy Poppy Drive coming up over the Veterans Day weekend, next weekend, uh, sorry, the weekend after, uh, and then on Veterans Day, uh, we'll be down in Plasto, and I believe in some places in Epping, uh, like, uh, Market Basket, we do well with that, um, and that funds, uh, a lot of these programs, um, like the Patriot, uh, uh, the Patriots Pen, which I sent out, uh, a, a bunch of emails to the schools, um, as well as the Voice of Democracy, 'cause, uh, students can get up to fifty-five thousand dollars, I believe, from this, the, once the competition's done nationally for, for school, and it's, it's amazing, so hopefully, we can support that again next year. Uh, Veterans Day, I'm trying to work with the Kingston Veterans Club, 'cause we try not to overlap events, uh, so we can, uh, get something, um, as far as a ceremony on that day, where it's still in the works, so, and I try to partner with them as well, there's a lot of members that are at both clubs, so we try not to, uh, overstep each other's boundaries, but they're doing some great things, and, uh, I hope to do a lot of good things in twenty twenty-two as well, so, just ask for your support.
You're a good neighbor on one twenty-five, and I would ask if there is anything the town can do, that you would reach out.
Alright.
Okay, and again, thank you for your service.
Right, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Alright, thank you. Um, we have a seven fifteen appointment from Devin Schwannad, um, if you wanna step up, if you're ready. Welcome Devin Schwannad, she ran the, um, oh-so-recently Vintage Bazaar on the Plains back at the beginning of October.
Yeah, it went really well, we were very happy.
What I heard, it was a big success?
Yep, we were thrilled with just the support we got, we had a lot of people from the town of Kingston, the surrounding communities come, that we, had never been to any of our shows before, so it was nice to see that the community embraced it, like we did.
Could I ask, I know it was kind of put together at last minute, 'cause you didn't have a place and everything else, but how many vendors did you have?
We, we definitely didn't have the amount that we normally have, um, we were about seventy vendors or so, um, as opposed to a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, and how many visitors did you have?
We estimated that we had about three thousand on Saturday, and about twelve hundred on Sunday. Which for last-minute moving of things, that was, that hit our benchmark, exceeded it, um, we usually have a little bit more than that, but not too much, so it's, this, the, the people did come, but the weather was...
Beautiful.
It was great, so it, that didn't...
Couldn't ask for better weather.
That didn't hurt us whatsoever, um, it actually blended itself perfectly, it was a little chilly on the Saturday morning, but it was a fall event, so people were...
You have to sell some chili to keep people warm.
Yeah, exactly. So I'm here to see if we could, um, well, first get any feedback that you all have heard, um, and answer any questions that you had, but then also get, um, propose our twenty-twenty dates, and start working on possibly doing that for next year, for June and October.
Well, first, I could ask, uh, Selectman Briggs, who is also the police chief, if he can give us a rundown on the public safety end of it, what he saw, or any reports?
Went, uh, went very well, I spoke both days, several times, went well, uh, there were no problems, no emergencies, uh, no complaints, I think she was very smart with her public relations campaign.
Yeah.
She went house to house, and gave a couple of tickets for each home.
Very nice.
Weekend passes, and we would do that again, and give them now that we would know the dates, we'd be able to do it well ahead of time.
How many police officers we ended up having?
Ended up having two, two each day, so we've talked about, uh, depending on the amount of, uh, uh, crowd that she was gonna have, uh, we could, you could either increase or decrease that based upon the size of the show.
Okay.
So that's why the meetings that we do with, with Rich, uh, Graham and I, work well prior to that.
Absolutely.
So it helps us work out and work through those issues, so that's something we should do, uh...
Yeah, we would start that right away, and, uh, maybe with the, having the time, we'd be able to utilize the fire department and not have to outsource.
So, and it'll be an outsourced?
It was outsourced, where we would...
And did they do anything?
Nothing.
Nothing?
No.
No, it went well, went very well.
It did go really well, and then we were excited to be a part of it, and, um, we know that Rick's Cafe, is that what it's called?
Yep.
They did, were very busy that, that Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Yeah, the Kingston House.
As well as the Kingston House, so it was...
Everybody was running, town was packed.
Yeah, it was busy, and was matter-of-fact.
Having stuff on the plains is not a bad thing for this town.
People were surprised, they said that, um, the ones that were coming here, that had never been, and had seen, uh, seen our marketing campaigns, their social media, uh, referred to the town as, "Oh, I always just drove through," and now to have this here was, we'd never really got to walk the plains before.
Yeah.
So it was nice to see that, that people were coming in, and...
It, what I saw after you were gone was nothing, it was...
Yeah, we made sure we walked through, we took two different days, just to make sure that it was picked up appropriately, and made sure that everything was moved out in a timely fashion, and, uh, all of that. And our parking staff did great, we had no problem with parking, um, and that's from a customer standpoint, people don't like leaving in traffic lines, and that's our, always our biggest problem that we've had in the past, and we had zero of that for the first time, it's our twenty-first show, we never had any, not one parking complaint, it worked out really well, um, and we didn't need to use any overflow parking, so that was a bonus, not having to have to do that, but had, we had a backup plan, we had worked with, um, the, the local schools, but we didn't need to use them, so...
Anything else from your end?
No, went very well, uh, we spoke each day, and, you know, one day we brought over a few more cones for you, and...
Yep.
And, uh, worked very well, and there was no, no issues whatsoever.
Nope.
Um, I guess, and this is kind of independent of you, um, we've been working on getting a, um, an event.
An incident action plan?
Yeah, and, uh, so that would be the one thing I wanna get the input of everybody on, and then just, um, I wanna double-check with Rich, 'cause did we get feedback on that?
I haven't heard any complaints.
From Rich?
Yeah.
Um, actually, Rich, Rich was here, we spoke, um, we spoke, uh, we worked on a, an incident action plan about, uh, dumpsters, and I think we ended up putting it behind the fire station, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and it worked great that way.
And, uh, Rich had a couple of comments that we implemented, and, and rammed it, and, uh, it went, went very well.
But after, did Rich have any issues?
None, none, it was very clean, he wrote the, a couple of days afterwards, and wasn't a piece of paper on the plains, did a very good job.
Thank you.
Rich?
I'm fine with it, so what are the final dates we're proposing?
The final, the, the dates that we would love to do it would be June twentieth and twenty-first, and October third and four.
October three and four.
Three and four, same weekend.
Rain or shine.
Rain or shine.
So twenty twenty-one of June, three, four, October.
Correct.
Just a question on that, go to what Bill said, do we wanna implement procedures before we...
Yeah.
...pick dates?
I, I would, I would recommend we do the incident action plan on both of them, right up front, and then, then come back.
Well, I think, uh, we're talking about procedure and our policy. Yeah, I think, I think, I don't have a problem booking that date per se, so she, to allow her, if no one else has put anything in, but I will tell you, my, my, I'm speaking for myself, my only concern is, don't take this the wrong way, you're a for-profit.
Correct.
And I don't mean that any, uh, 'cause again, no nonprofit's gonna be able to pull something off like this.
Right.
So I wanna look at what would be a, um, equitable use for the town for a fee, and as well as you, I'm not, by any means looking to bankrupt you, I want, I want this to take off, because I think you bring a lot to the town with your event.
Sure.
Um, but I think we said, it, this isn't, not so much for you, we wanna do an incident action plan for, you know, up to five hundred people, up to a thousand people, up to two thousand, and so on, so that next year, you're gonna have something, it's not gonna be on a whim, at the last minute, we're gonna tell you, "Oh, you're gonna do this," or whatever, um, I don't see a problem working with you, uh, but we don't, we're not ready to implement what we need to do.
We'll start early and get them.
Yeah, well, we, that's why I'm in here today, so that we have the time.
We need to get our procedure together by the end of the year, so...
But aside from that, if we did start, got our procedure together, not just for her, for any organization...
For anybody.
But you, would you guys have any heartburn if we told her that we could commit to June twentieth and twenty-first, and October third and fourth?
Yeah, as long as there's no conflict with a town organization.
Alright, I think, I think the fire department might be looking to do a VFW fest again on June twenty-ninth, but we'll figure that out as it comes, that's a weekend after.
So we probably wanna start early with the state park.
Start, we started yesterday, you know, no, and, and another thing that we would like to do, that we just didn't have the time, and I did reach out, but I think it was just a matter of lack of time, uh, is to see if there was a local, in other places we've done it, we've worked with the, the Lions Club, or, or our local organization, and they, sell hot dogs, or hamburgers, or things like that, to raise their own money, or if it was the Boy Scouts, or something like that, uh, we just didn't have that time this...
Yeah.
...to do it this time, but we would really like to be able to do that, just to bring more of the community sense to, to all of it, because we...
Well, I think if you could take those dates, you know, you, you, you've got plenty of time to plan this time, and I look to build a relationship that you had, and solve any, very moving forward, 'cause it was, it was nice, the Ju-, the Junior Women's used to do the Craft Day every October.
Right.
That is long since gone, and it would be nice to have something.
Sure, that'd be great. I don't think I have anything else, but I, we'll start working on a incident action plan, and...
Yeah.
Take it from there, and get that underway, and happily be at the beta test, so to speak, to, so that we can get done for other events.
Yep.
Is there an organization, is there, is there a...
There's many.
Right, okay.
For what?
VFW is just here.
Yeah, I noticed that, so I was like, okay...
They would really probably like to do something like that, with the fire department, there's a few different people you could get.
Okay.
So what, what I would do is maybe post it, post it on our bulletin board.
Okay.
Uh, maybe with Susan, whoever, anybody interested?
See if people are interested in participating.
Right. Then she could get that to you.
I just know from like a food standpoint, they would, they would...
I'm sure you could find an organization...
The Lions usually do a breakfast for takes the days, and...
Yeah.
There'd definitely be organizations that do it.
Yeah, I'm sure you could find someone that would be interested in doing it, maybe even a couple.
Right, I mean, if the VFW wanted to, we would embrace that for sure, um, my grandfather's ninety-five, he was actually at the bazaar dancing in front of the stage, and he's a World War II vet, so he participates in a lot of the...
No, do, uh, you know, I would say, if you could even reach out to that gentleman that was just here, and...
Do you know, what was his name?
Steven, Steven DeLong, and he said he lives in Brentwood, but you, I'm sure if you sent something to the VFW post on one twenty-five, swap the name, buy some, a meat wrapper ticket or something.
Right, right, okay, that's all I have to say, but if you have any questions, so, so I'll be in touch with you then, in the next couple of days, and we'll start that process.
Thank you for reaching out to us.
Thank you for having us, we really enjoyed it, it was one of the least stressful times we've had.
Really, it wasn't stressful to coming back two weeks in a row, without knowing if you could do it or not?
True.
It might have been even, yeah, it might even, yeah.
No, it was, it was, it was, that's part of the course, and they have to be understanding that, now, it was the last minute, and it worked out great, and, uh, so everything happens for a reason, so, it was perfect for us, and we were just tickled to be here, and now to be able to do it again, um, and be able to work with Rex, and work with the Kingston House, and make it so that they're even more involved.
Yeah.
It was nice, I mean, even the Houses of Pizza were really busy, because our, our food lines, after the food trucks were long, and people wanted food, so they went to the local places, and, so, just even getting brochures from those people, just so we could hand them out to customers.
Yeah.
Nowhere, where to go, so, excellent, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
You too.
Um, I could ask you, Board, um, in your packet, there was a, um, proposal from New England Soundproofing that Chief Briggs sought out.
We've got a little time, please, please.
Yeah, I'm just trying to pick up some time, but if anyone, does anyone have any comments on that?
Yeah, I have a comment on the very bottom, the square footage, what's the difference in those things?
Um, I can send you the photographs, they've got, they've actually done the inside of the building here, and shows, it shows the panels.
Oh, it actually shows it?
Shows the panels, on the ceiling, on the walls.
So this is square footage is of panels?
Of panels.
Yeah, but if you look, it, like, if you do the one-point-force square footage, it's one second, it mentions about the reverb.
Oh, I know all that.
If you do the, yeah, but I, did he mention anything at all about speakers alone, just even?
He said if you, if you hang the sound back, you're gonna see an incredible difference in here.
He said with, with seven seconds, I think, there's a reverb, I read, um, I would just think, um, maybe this is something we could put for a warrant article possibly.
Or, I'll send you the photographs that he sent me, and maybe we look locally, to see if someone local could make them, and probably do it for a quarter of the price.
Well, then you start getting into the station nightclub stuff, it has to be built properly, and we could still go with the bid for other things, but this might be the bid that we at least, doesn't mean we're gonna hire this guy, but this, where we put in a warrant article for a price, and then, once we have it, then we solicit bids.
But he said you, you'll notice it, 'cause the ceiling panels?
Yeah.
Wall panels, either end, all sides.
I also think this should be coupled with, uh, a visual presentation method, be it a screen, or a large TV, or something like that, that constantly brought this up, but, you know, for the planning board, when half the audience can't hear it, and half the audience can't see it, you, you just get the same questions over and again, and it just would, it would make meetings go a lot quicker, just for that, but I think, you know, if someone comes with pictures or something like that to our meeting, you know, we can put that out.
I was pretty sure, I don't know where the ball got dropped, but I thought there was money in the planning board's budget, I thought, for an LCD projector, it was budgeted last year.
The only technology upgrade was the laptop that was five or six years old.
We, we absolutely need a PowerPoint projector in here, but I thought, I thought that was in your budget, I, I'd have to double-check, it went somewhere, and maybe it went in Selectments to do it, but we need one, uh, that isn't a big cost, I...
No, but I think to do it right, have it properly wired in, or, or off the Wi-Fi network, where it's, we're not, you know, nineteen eighty-seven and...
No, not a table, it would be, it would be, drop down for a pole, if you had to eject on something on the screen, that's a one-time mount, it's not gonna take away anything from the buildings, but I'll have to double-check, I apologize, I thought it was in your budget, but it might have been in the Select, 'cause we talked about it, we...
I've never talked about it many times.
The Budget Committee actually put the money there somewhere, I'll find out, um, but I think the voters should decide, I think it's, we should do something, but I can't believe they even, they wouldn't, at least because of the fact that I don't know what they... But, I don't know how you guys feel, but I, I want them to call it, if you can't hear anything, it's built.
Nobody gives echoes from those directions without some kind of sound barrier, that's what he said.
Did he talk about what he would do, I mean, does it take away anything from the historic, or?
Nope, uh, once, once you see it, you're gonna be amazed, the thing he sent me. Did I send you?
You mean other than the ductwork, or the sprinklers?
Did you, did you look at the?
Pictures of it.
Did you look at the pictures?
I'm taking from the historical aspect, how they were mounted in here, and all of that.
I think he could show us something, like they're just mounted on the walls, and they were plain.
Did, did I send you the email that he sent me?
I don't think so.
Okay, I just, I just got it, uh, I think it was Friday I got it.
When the ductwork was done, they were giving an option for sound, acoustic ductwork, and they chose not to spend the money.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm looking right now, is anyone see different, I only see sprinkler heads on the front, the back, and that side. I don't see anything in the middle.
Probably because there's...
See, that light doesn't look to anything, that's why.
Oh, yeah, okay, alright, yeah, okay, there, there's, okay, alright, so there's only one, two, and three bays, but... I would definitely think we should, I, I mean, I think we should do it, but I, I don't wanna do it without the vote is approval.
But I think this gives us a starting point, to know what we need for that portion of it, but, you know, a lot of this, like the microphone over there, you know, or the, we just need to make it a little more...
Yeah.
Not presentation professional in here.
Could I ask then, if, at the very least, the chief could forward the picture you have to Rich, so that you can, your next heritage meeting, or the historic, you know, you could present it to him, just to start the conversation of what we're gonna be looking for on the spring vote? Anyone else have any other comments on that? Um, we talked about the waste management, Susan put a couple of things in your packets for, um, subject system wastewater, and...
A question that came from Dave, Sam, that he just distributed a couple of information things for you.
Okay, um, well, this is brand-new, 'cause I just talked to Cindy the other day about this.
What is that called?
Purchase and policies and procedures.
Yeah, this afternoon.
So it is brand-new, I would ask everyone to take a look at it, and if you have anything, 'cause I said to, um, Bill, I said, geez, I thought we talked about this a long time ago, it was signing these purchase orders, so if everyone could take a look at it, and maybe we can discuss it, uh, next week's meeting or something?
I make a motion to approve both the public and non-public minutes of October twenty-first, twenty nineteen.
Uh, any corrections, or anything? Is that all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? I don't see anyone here for the committee appointments at seven-thirty yet to come in, but I'll open up for public comment number one.
Um, I'll, I invited Glenn here as a result of the site walk, um, and, and who that actually falls under, so, I requested that Mr. Koppelman be here in case there were any questions regarding that, so, just in case anyone wondered when Glenn's here.
Well, apparently you heard room, you heard about our site walk on Sunday then?
I did, when I realized I had set my alarm wrong, I promptly called Chief Briggs and Koppelman.
Okay.
I have already seen the site, though, in my defense.
Well, thank you for reaching out to the chairman of the planning board, because there was a question that was brought up about it, um, pretty much by his attorney, but anyways, um, they're supposed to be coming under old business.
Yeah, he's, um, because he looked at this, I don't think the committee appointments are coming, I wasn't sure, so I put it on there, just in case, so he's coming at seven forty-five.
What time?
Seven forty-five, so you know.
Oh, it'd be a bummer if none of us are here at seven forty-five.
Bummer, miracle, you know, whatever you wanna call it.
Act of God. Uh, okay, um, is there any old business besides the President and Storage, um, walk-through that we did on Sunday, that they're gonna be coming in a little bit, anything else under old business? Anything under new business? I guess we already talked about it, Cindy did craft a new policy and procedure, um, for purchasing, and we just said we'll take a look at it.
You have the health insurance annual? I think it's in the signature, I'm not sure.
Yeah, which, I don't know if any of yous had a chance to look, it is up seven-point-something percent, healthcare costs for our employees. Seven-point-four percent was the increase in healthcare, and the dental plan is an increase of three-point-nine percent. Uh, it's really not like we can do anything about it, it is what it is, but just so you know, it is going up, and that's, I'm gonna assume effective, beginning of the year, or, um, January first? January first of December, um, I think, well, I mean, again, there's not much we can do, because, um, thanks to some past governors in the state of New Hampshire, we're very limited in choices, but I think maybe next, we should consider telling, um, Cindy to June, start looking around, see if there's any other interns we could do for our employees. Uh, I would, I would personally think we should consider adding in a high deductible HSA account.
That's what, the health trust?
This is health trust, yes, but I'm saying... This is health trust, yes, but I'm saying, we could enter, it, it saves money for the employees. Um, and it saves money for all of us having a high deductible HSA account. And then what we could do is you supplement the employees by putting, you know, it's like, I'll tell you, the county that we offer it, and a lot of people jump to it. Because it's a four thousand dollar deductible, and you basically have a credit card, and the county matches up to two thousand five hundred. Into it, and that goes into your account, and that is now yours, and then under federal guidelines, you're allowed to put in up to, I think, by, like. Four thousand nine hundred dollars in it. Okay, so you can put your own money in it that's tax-free, and then, um. You pay off the deductible, once the deductible's met, the insurance kicks in, just like any other insurance. And when you're talking young firefighters and young police officers that really don't use the insurance, it's incredible how much they will save. Because instead of paying the single person, um. You know, the single person rate is nine hu- nine hundred and fifty-three dollars a month. Yeah, you're talking probably like three hundred dollars a month.
That's a big, it's definitely cheaper.
You know, and to be honest, most of our employees are, are young, and they would benefit from it. And, I mean, we're not forcing them to take it, it's just another option, is all it is.
We do the exact same thing at work, we have a thousand dollar deductible, they match fifty percent, or a hundred percent of what we put in.
Yeah.
And, and we spend it accordingly.
Yeah, and if you don't use it, it rolls over, and it carries you, if you leave the town of Kingston, you still have it, it's your HSA, it's your health saving account. But there's nothing we're gonna be able to do about this year, but I would say we look at, so, um, I entertain a motion to authorize me to sign the. Rate adjustment for healthcare and dental, through health trust.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, what, why is the fund balance policy here? She wants to update it? Yeah.
Didn't change at all, but because it hasn't been updated in that long, they wanted her to redo it, so you need to re-sign it, exactly the same as what you had, but maybe.
Who, who, she went through it?
Yeah, I think it's through, um, PRA, someone that she spoke with, on the auditor, that that should be updated.
Okay, and there's no need to change anything? Alright, so I don't know, any of yous care, but apparently, you know, March two thousand twelve was the last time we updated the fund balance policy. Uh, it looks like Cindy has just changed in the date. Does anyone, do you wanna look at this, and, or do you wanna vote on it now, based on her recommendation? I, I just question, who's the authority to, if we were to change anything, like, I mean, should it be changed? I guess, so it's under the audit purview? At least there's five signature lines. With the board's pleasure. Okay, so I wanna make a motion that we adopt the new fund balance, or, or, um, reapprove. The updated version of the fund balance policy.
Make that motion, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chief? There you go. The other thing, there was the, um, Susan was re, she went to a seminar in, um. Donahue Tucker.
Yeah, I did go to the seminar, they sent that letter.
We had this last week in our packet, and I didn't take a look at it, I don't know how you feel, I mean, to be honest, we're running into this fairly often now. With the public right of ways, we've seen it more in the last year than, I think, has come to the selectmen before. Um, did the planning board have a chance to take a look at it?
Susan sent it to me, just to see if I had any knowledge of it or comments, and I read it twice, and it's. Must admit, I don't know a lot about it, but I did reach out to a couple of people who I thought might have more information, and I, they just haven't gotten back to me yet. So, when I get feedback, I mean, if you still would like to have it, I'll pass it on to Susan.
If you could pass on to Susan, or even, um, Phil, but I'd be curious, you know, is, is the cost involved in it? They're looking to do a cost share, they're doing it for several different towns? So, I don't know if you have any opinions on it?
I'd wanna do some research as well.
Okay, so we have it out there, let's see, you know, uh, we missed the first deadline, they didn't seem to care too much. Um, but.
So they were, they were fine with the, the deadline that had passed, that if folks still wanted to?
Right, 'cause it was past the deadline, we got a second letter, so I called them, and I said, okay, so there was a deadline, can we still join this? She said certainly, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure that if they haven't actually, you know, signed contracts yet with the towns that were interested. Obviously, the more towns that jump on board, the, the lower the cost per town goes, so, they probably would want to get more folks in.
Actually, you know what?
It's a, it's a complicated issue.
Send it to Sunday and to Primex.
Think I should.
Yeah. Right, we should get a legal opinion on it.
It's probably not a bad idea.
I would send it both to Sunday and Primex, 'cause Primex would obviously have an opinion, or even NHMA.
Well, that's, that's one of the, my reach out.
One of the, okay, alright, we'll, we'll skip. Okay, yeah.
Actually, I reached out to NHMA and to, um, Tim Roche at the Planning Commission, just to see what his take on it was.
Okay.
He might, he might have knowledge of what, you know, some other towns are doing, and, and what the, what the nut of the issue is with it.
I don't know if it ends up being, like, redways that ends of street, dead-end streets for beach rates, or is that something about cell towers? And easements?
It's more, it's taxation with regard to telecommunications equipment, and what's gonna happen is that with the eventual deployment of five G. They're gonna, you know, telecommunications companies are gonna be putting more and more and more equipment out onto poles, and out onto, you know, rights of way. And so, um, but, but there are, there's, there's legislation tied in with this, it's, it's.
I'd just be more curious if we're signing away our rights to actually get money, because when it comes to that sort of thing, they, they know where they wanna put towers in that. And I'd hate if we had spots where we're gonna give up twenty-five, or even more percent to. Um, an attorney for, firm in, you know, Exeter. Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any committee liaison reports?
Pretty lately attended building inspectors meeting on Thursday, so, I got nothing.
How's the, um, new plumbing inspector working out?
Dave's very active. Him and Robert are working well together when they need coverage overlapping, so, and, and he works well with the fire department, so I would say, it's been great.
Are you guys ready yet, or still waiting? I don't see your attorney here. Invite him up and see, he only got the visa to put up. Are you ready yet, or not yet? You ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Well, come on up, I'd like to, uh, welcome Brezner Hand. One of our newest businesses in town, soon to be newest business in town, doing a lot of work. Um, and Mr. Zilch from SCC Engineering. We did invite Glenn Koppelman from the planning board, so if you wanna come up and sit at the table. So, um, we did have a.
Thank you.
Site walk at the storage facility Sunday morning. And the decision came up, we, we talked about just different things over there, what he's done and everything else. And then it was the question of, is this in the selectmen's purview, or the planning board's purview? And I guess we, we talked about a lot of different things, whether you're gonna redo trees, or put up fences. Um, and so, you're back, you wanted, you asked for some more time to come before us, so.
Yes. So, I mean, it was pretty obvious that what we proposed, um, at the last meeting, and also from discussion at the site walk. Was less than what you expected, uh, you were disappointed, to be quite frank. And so, uh, Joe, his attorney, myself, had a conversation at the end of the site walk. And thought that we would, um, come up with something substantially better, and I think we have, so that's for your consideration. Uh, what Joe's decided is that he's willing to plant basically an additional hundred and four trees. Uh, in addition to the eighty-seven that he's already more or less planted, or that he just brought on site. And, so in all, he'll be planting about two hundred trees in order to mitigate this overcut that occurred on the property. And so what he's looking at is kind of what we talked about in the site walk, is if you can see, uh, along this section. Uh, adjacent to the section he has yet to build, um, there was obviously a fairly substantial cut here. Um, I've been kinda saying all along, I, I need to go back in and disturb anywhere close to the burnable areas, the wetlands. Instead, I'd like to see a really good planting, this is about a four hundred foot length, this section right here, if you follow the thread of this. And so, that equates to about, um, putting fifty trees in there, and, you know, by the, the, uh, the ordinance. They're looking for a mix of evergreens and hardwoods, and so that's what we're proposing. They'd be, um, about sixteen or seventeen feet apart staggered, so you'd have them really about every eight feet, which is basically ideal. For a higher density planting, so not only does that give you a, a nice buffer, in addition to the, what little you have left along here. But it also gives you, um, a physical buffer, so no one's gonna go back in, and in, and get into these areas again. If Joe's gonna spend the money to put fifty trees here, certainly not gonna be any machinery beyond that, in those buffers again. And so the other area where we're coming up with the additional fifty would be this section here, it's gotta be, um, advantageous to run. Get another row on the south side of that big long detention area. And that one, it's, it's all, to me, it's like visual buffers, it's like, where can you see all these things? And when you're coming south, and you see across this open area, you can see the farm over here. And so, I thought this would be a pretty effective, uh, buffer, again, to reestablish this all along here. That's, again, that one's a little bit longer, it's about four hundred and thirty feet, four hundred and forty feet, so you're slightly further apart, but still very effective. Staggered row of trees, so that's the one hundred trees that I was talking about. And they both effectively do the same thing, they give you a visual buffer and a physical buffer. The other, uh, the, the other buffer that we're talking about at the last selectance meeting. Um, was this area over here, and I know the neighbors, uh, from your conversations, um, are happy with the project. They don't really have any big issues, but I think it's, uh, I think Joe, being a good neighbor, wants to also put back some of the buffer and, and maintain that. That, uh, feeling of, of, that spirit of, uh, friendship there, so we're, we're talking about, again. Adding a row of evergreen on the outside of that fifty-foot buffer, just to fill that area in. So I think that would certainly help with that area, we don't wanna put anything.
He, he said he's not paying you up until you punch in, so.
Sure not gonna pay me anyway. So again, just, uh, this area here, he's gonna maintain that, and it's also what he wants to propose, so we had thirteen, uh, mixed evergreens in that area. We wanted to use all evergreen, because as, as you can see, it's pretty well open there. I think, coming south, looking this way, with this buffer added, that added in, uh, and then you've already got this existing area still. In support of all the, the wetland buffers and burnables, I think that'd be a pretty effective buffer. And the last area, uh, is, as you know, you saw right here on the south side, Joe put in a, a pretty good, strong row of both. So he just wanted to add some additional evergreen along here, just to round it out, and give a little bit more of a buffer to those neighbors. My understanding is they're all pretty happy with Joe, they're pretty happy with the development. So that's what we wanna bring back to the board, is, is, obviously, this is something, uh, in more substantial than we had proposed last time. So I hope it's, it's something that, uh, it would be more receptive to. Any thoughts?
I'll speak for myself, I, I wish two weeks ago, when you came back, this is what you would have proposed to us sincerely, um, but it. Um, I agree, we, as you're on the site walk, we said we don't wanna disturb the vegetation that's there. So by sticking on the borders, exactly, we're proposing, I, I would hope would work, but, um, I don't know, anyone else make comments?
I'm fine with it, but we still have the question about whether this is our decision or the planning board's.
Well, I, I think that was the more, um, the bigger, um, topic, and I, I think ultimately. It do, it does have to go to the planning board, I don't know, how, and, anyone else feels? Or Glenn, if you wanna weigh in?
Well, speaking, speaking, you know, as a planning board member, I think that, and Phil, you can chime in if you're, you're the rep to the planning board, but, um. And I realize that the select board is the enforcement body.
Yeah.
However, what we have here is an approved site plan.
Yeah.
The approved site plan is now different, and if the site plan had gone away, or was inactive. Or, you know, uh, revoked, or whatever, uh, then I believe it would fall into the select board's hands. At this point, uh, because we're talking about a modification to an approved site plan. It's the planning board that does planning, that does site plan amendments, and so I believe that that's where, where it belongs. But that's my perspective from, from planning.
And I think it was a legitimate mistake, because an enforcement action was requested, and, and it was the building permit that basically led to our conversations, but. Yeah, I, I think we're definitely stepping into their court, you know.
But, I agree, and I, I think, chief?
Well, I know we were having that discussion on Sunday, where, where our authority, when we stopped, the planning boards took over. I think, uh, Glenn Greenwood was making the comment that, just, which was. There's a, there's an amended site plan now, based upon, what did the original plan show?
As for?
The number of trees and what happened.
Well, it wasn't, it was not clear-cutting it, that was the original plan.
Well, it did show, um, adding trees along the front of the building, basically, um, spot, spotted trees around the, uh, the units and such. I think we had thirty-seven or forty, somewhere between that.
Eighty, eighty-seven is what you added.
We added over a hundred, a hundred and. We had eighty-seven original, we added about a hundred.
Well, well, I don't have the plan with us, I, maybe you guys do, but, I mean, the, the, the plan obviously had some landscaping, and some, and some buffering. That was a part of the development, uh, but the plan that was approved also showed the areas that were gonna remain in their natural state.
And unfortunately, those got.
That is the, is the area now that's in question.
Chairman, if, if I can, I mean, I can just address your, uh, usually my voice is so loud, people ask me to be quiet, but I appreciate that.
Well, no, it's, it's, it's because of the televising, and they need to capture the voices and so forth.
I'd just like to address the issue of, of who has jurisdiction on this. If, if the, this board of selectmen is the board of enforcement, and you're now saying, uh, it has to go back to the planning board. Really, the only thing, according to your interpretation, would, would mean that this board only can say, do exactly. What was on the plan, you have zero power to say, even if there was just one tree missing. You have zero power to say, even if there was just one tree missing, you have zero power to, uh, to say that's okay. I would suggest to you that in all cases where there's a, uh, where there's a, someone who exercises jurisdiction and enforcement, they have the right to make a reasonable decision. An example, and Chief may disagree with how I see this, I'm not a criminal attorney, but if, um, if a case, if I'm defendant, I go to court and there is a, a certain fine or a certain penalty, the court has the right to say, yes, there's a five hundred dollar fine, but in this case, under these circumstances, I'm going to waive it. And I think that any, anytime, any Board has the kind of power to enforce or not enforce, built into that is the power to say, we'll take what we have, we understand what the problems were, and we're willing not to further enforce this. That's your power to say, I'm only going to enforce this thing to a certain extent. And I think that's what we're suggesting here. Make, snake was made, no question about it. I think one of the things that we keep forgetting to say, uh, continually, is this is not the developer who comes in and says, oh, now I've cut all these trees down, let me put three more houses in those lots. None of the spaces where the trees were cut are going to be used, that was never the intent. If, if we send it back to the Planning Board, then we literally have months to go, uh, before it gets herred, gets resolved, and, and comes, it comes back to basically where it is now. I'm suggesting to you that this Board has the right and should exercise the right to say, we are going to enforce the plan to the extent that we see it now, or if you say, look, I want something more.
I, I think the, the proper thing would be, because like you said, up until Sunday's morning's walkthrough, I didn't know there's an ordinance on the buffer and everything. And, you know, so that's where their expertise comes in. Uh, you know, I'm a fireman, I don't know too much, I pull the holes and that's it, you know, the rest of it's dabbling. I think your opportunity was after you had that first site walk and you came back, that was your opportunity to possibly sell it to this Board before we even had a chance to think about the Planning Board again, and not for nothing, you feel miserably when you put up, you know, eighteen pine trees. So then we had that second walkthrough, this looks good to me, and I would try saying, you know, I think, I would hope the Planning Board, um, makes it as expeditions possible, but it looks good to me right now, this plan, it seems legit and everything else. I would think where our authority would lie in is if you go and work with the Planning Board, we wouldn't hold you up for any occupancy or anything, as long as we know you've got good faith eff- effort, because, you know, you're not going to be, you're only looking for the phase one part, not the phase two. You know, that's where we could have worked with you, I would think. Um, so we're not tying you up from opening, but I think, I, I, I think you've heard from the other people on the Board, I think it's out of our purview now and it really should go back to the Planning Board.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm the Selectment's rep to the Planning Board, so it's not like I'm punting this. I'm still going to have to deal with it, you know, it's not like it's coming off my desk, but, um, you know, I, it kind of supersedes another elected body when they spend months and months working on a plan and ironing out all these details and then something major's changed on it, and then we're just taking that away from them and not, not allowing the people who put all the effort into it initially to amend the site plan as such. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about, you know, the enforcement action would go to a point, but this is definitely getting into the area of how far over that enforcement authority are we going and we're, we're superseding in a duly-elected Board at the same time. Because what people can do is just go to the Planning Board, get a site plan done, and then they can just change a whole bunch of things and come to us and say, oh, well, this, and, and I'm not saying that when this happened, this is a legitimate mistake, but when we're undermining another Board's authority, I, I just feel that that's the way we have to go is over to them. And I, and I agree, you know, we'll certainly try and work with you as far as getting you open, or at least phase one, you know, as long as good faith effort is shown, I mean, the plan's already started, and, you know, I, I fully recognize that going to the Planning Board is going to add time onto that, but I, the fundamental elements of this haven't changed, and I think you're going to work with us, you want to fix it, and.
I want to say that I agree with both of you, but at the same time, when they were here several meetings ago, and we told them to come to us with a plan, to me, that meant we took it over. Whether that was right or wrong, we took it over at that point, we shouldn't have requested that at that time if we were going to send it back to the Planning Board.
Well, I wasn't thinking.
And in the last meeting, we did the same thing, we said, we're not happy with it, let's have a site visit. So we took it over again, so now we'll turn around saying, basically, you wasted two visits with us, it needs to go to the Planning Board.
Well, I would say they wasted a visit because they come up.
Well, they did, but.
Having a valuable plan, you know.
Maybe the Planning Board would have wanted less, or, you know, I doubt that, but, you know. I, I think if we do make them go to the Planning Board, I want to at least put my support to this plan, going back to the Planning Board.
I would actually say the same thing, I think it looks legit to me, you know, I, I really do, I, so I, I, I would support it.
Well, why don't we send it back with a vote? That we, we, if we had the authority to accept that, that we would accept that plan. And with, and send it back to the Planning Board and see what their choices. I mean, we, we went out and looked at it, but we knew, based upon what we saw on Sunday, that that would be satisfactory, that's what we spoke about, is that not correct?
Yeah.
So, again, so we went out and spent that time to look at it and felt that was what was necessary to, to what we thought would make that requirement. So I would, I would send it back saying that, that we would support that plan, but really, we don't have the authority to do so, it's enough.
I would be recusing myself from that vote, as you should, I think I would have to see again.
And to further what you said, if we're going to hold, I mean, if we're not going to hold occupancies and all that, then we should say that we're not going to hold them based on this plan. I mean, even though the Planning Board may do more.
No, the Planning Board should, the Planning Board should have final authority.
No, I'm, I'm, I agree with that, but you can't say we're going to let them have their occupancy and all that when they don't have an approved plan at this point, because that's saying, okay, we're going to do nothing, you've already said you're not.
No, we should, I, what I said was, as long as they continue to work with the Planning Board in good faith effort, and the Planning Board recognize that and sends a recommendation to us that we don't tie up, I can't see tying them, they're occupied.
I agree with that.
Well, they do, they do have an approved plan, but this, it's a modified plan.
Yeah.
Now, you're missing my point.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What if, just what if, don't, don't jump up, but what if they do absolutely nothing when they walk out of there? What if they can't reach an agreement with the Planning Board? You're trying to say we're going to get, let them have occupancy based on the fact that they're working with the Planning Board, what if they never come to an agreement?
I think we'll know pretty soon on that, but I would think also, they still got a whole nother phase to go.
I know, but just so you're not giving them occupancy as your by-point, you can't give away.
We're not ready to take a vote on that yet.
That's what you said a minute ago, so that's what I'm saying, I don't.
How do you get an occupancy on what I have, not on this future plan?
Right.
On phase three.
Right.
Correct.
You get an occupancy for the first section.
Right, on one and two.
Yeah.
So I'd be nothing doing.
No, I understand, what he's saying is, you know, um, we're the teeth in it, I'm just saying, I'm not ready to vote, say, you're not ready to open it anyways, I would think if you could get it to the Planning Board's schedule, start opening discussion.
Well, we're also dealing with a weather constraint, the ground's going to be frozen here very shortly, so.
What, what are you looking for, for opening on the first phase, the first and second phase?
When I'm done, could be a month.
If, if we, uh, agreed that we would make every effort to get it back to the Planning Board as soon as they, they can fit us in, and to, uh, cooperate, and if we can show you the cooperation that, when this is done, if we can get an occupancy permit for just the, the house and the, uh, the first section, would that be available?
It would, would to me, because you're still, I mean, e- even if you didn't do anything, we'd still hold up the second, the third.
Right.
I mean, so, right, I mean, that's my opinion, the rest of the Board feels.
Could you, could you, could you? Sorry. Could, could Charlie, could you point to the map and if, if the Select Board is, is offering the, um, the opportunity to, to issue occupancy for some of it, can you physically point to which, which parts that would include?
Got it, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, for, I, because I'm not sure what the phases.
Well, here's the office building here.
Yep.
And then phase two and, and one and two, rather, was encompassed all of this.
Okay.
Basically, the units that he's got constructed and under-construkted.
From the Vernal Pool north, we wouldn't.
Yeah, this would be excluded from that.
He's, they'd done work in there, but I, I will say again, Phil has been upfront from the very beginning, because he, because this is what you run into, the planting season, we talked about it, you know, that was the biggest thing, you know, and I, I, unfortunately now, we're at the point where I can't actually sink a tree if the Planning Board doesn't approve it, but this is exactly the thing Phil was trying to avoid. Um, and I just wish the thing sooner, but it's, it is, the ship has sailed.
So is this, you're the Chair of Planning Board, how do you feel about this plan? That we're just so.
You know, I, I'd rather not say, because I'm going to be involved in, if, if in fact the decision is for you to go back for an amended plan, that that's, that's, that's where my comment would be, I, I really don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think we're at that point, I think, I think we, as a Select Board, we all individually said it should go back to the Planning Board.
Yeah.
I, I certainly don't see an issue with, like we discussed, having given him occupancy for one and two, because he won't be able to build three until he comes into compliance with the Planning Board. I don't know, I mean, that's something the Planning Board can discuss as well.
But as the Chair here, who can see this plan, he's never once, from day one, voted in favor of any single thing on this plan, uh, one time. So I feel it's going to go pretty stalemate when it gets there.
I'm hoping not, because it's, there, it is a, a twelve-member Board, or, I mean, eleven.
It's, Kevin, look, it's a seven-member, uh, seven-member Board. When I chair that Board, I, I often leave my comments to, uh, to after other Board members have had a chance to talk. I do my best not to prejudice them, and, uh, and if I have issues with a particular plan, and I either abstain or I vote against, uh, I do it for, for my own, for my own reasons and how I feel that, that the plan either meets or doesn't meet ordinances and the spirit and intent of things, and, uh, it's a seven-member Board, and, and I am only one vote on that Board.
I would say, in all honesty, we already had this conversation, really don't, you know, we're not asking you to plant a forest, we're not. And I think the Planning Board is going to be pretty reasonable, I think you heard Phil talk, you heard Phil talk before, you know, um, you, you had, you had, um, Phil Rich Saint Elair, um, and, um, Dennis Quintel over there, and I thought you guys came to some conclusion, and then two weeks ago, you came with that other thing, and that set us back, that's what.
Mr. Chairman, we clearly have no, um, no dispute about the Chairman acting in good faith when he brings it back, that's not a question in our mind. Uh, but if you could, um, accept, uh, the idea that when this is ready, we can come back and get an occupancy per for one and two, we will pledge to you that we will back before the Planning Board, and we will work as hard as possible to get an agreement.
That's, that's all I'm asking for, I think that's all we're all asking for. Um, I think we're, we're trying to be reasonable, we really appreciate it, um, I wish we, the other meeting went differently.
Yeah. Some mistakes have been made in this project, for certain.
I, you're a good businessman, you're trying to do the right thing, I appreciate it. Trying to move forward, that's all.
I can't tell you why it was overcut, I mean, I paid Charlie three times to mark it out. Everything that was overcut, I.
I know, I know, and that's what we're trying to do, is move.
Just to mark it those three times.
And I gotta get, I gotta get these guys off the payroll. Right, Charlie?
That's right.
I heard someone went by and said, I double dogged the area to tear, to tear it all down, isn't that? I, I apologize for not eating the donuts, hopefully they didn't go to waste.
Mr. Chairman, uh, can I ask that if we go forward with this, it's with the understanding that the applicant will come back to the Planning Board at the earliest possible meeting that it can make, for purposes of noticing?
Yes.
Okay. Which at this point, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but December at least.
It would be December.
But we have.
December?
But we have two meetings, so we might be able to do it at, you know.
Right.
At, at, at the earlier meeting, we have two meetings a month.
Tell us when we do it.
Well, Char- Charlie, if he's going to be your representative, needs to be going to the Planning Board office, talking to Ellen, and finding out what the earliest possible meeting is to get on, and then submit the plans and submit whatever materials you need to. So, as long as it's with that understanding, because, I mean, we've, we've, we've had some other situations where there's been an understanding that, uh, an applicant would be coming back at a certain time, and then all of a sudden it, uh.
I, I would have to hold up, the deadline for the December meeting seems to be the thirty-first of August.
Which December meeting?
Uh, meeting is December tenth. The other one, I think, um, probably the fifteenth or fifteenth, I don't know, it's a meeting in the, in the year.
Well, there are typically two meetings, one is on the first Tuesday and one is on the third Tuesday.
December thirty, January thirty-fourth.
So we've changed the meeting date on that month?
Probably.
Probably.
Christmas. I think it's the eighteenth.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, thanks, Adam.
I'll, I'll work with that, Ellen, she'll be in tomorrow to assume.
Yes.
Third Tuesday's the seventeenth.
Yeah, the seventeenth is when they, uh, hearing.
It would be the normal hearing night. So it's, so the, so the, so the third Tuesday has been moved up to the second Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay. December.
And for clarification purposes, I think the ship has sailed for the plant, can we assume the ship has sailed for the planting season? And he, he shouldn't be planting if the Planning Board hasn't approved anything, because I wouldn't want to see him waste money. Although.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's up to him, he knows what the weather may do.
I'm planted if you tell me it's.
I just don't want to, I just don't want you to, you know, have to say, oh, you, you know, you said do this, and then the Planning Board said to do something different. I don't want to get caught in that thing, I don't.
I, I.
I called my landscaper when I left Sunday, and I said, don't pull your machine out of there. So, I mean, I'm ready to.
Certainly, anything relating to landscaping, uh, you know, uh, you. I think you're pretty much done with that anyway.
Yes, yes.
And frankly, anything that's going to be put in, uh, in the other areas, in the overcut areas, you're just further ahead, if you can get some of that done, because I can't imagine that, uh, that, that, that the Board would be telling you, don't plant in the.
All right, so, I, I'm not, I'm not saying don't plant, because I, I would rather see it planted, because you've got a whole six months before spring comes, and I'd rather see it be growing, but I just don't want to be at a point where, you know, he was told to do something and then, you know, spring comes and it's like, hey, why'd you do that? You really should have done that, you know, or.
I appreciate that, because we want to be seen as cooperating, and if it, if the ground is getting frozen and it won't grow, and we don't put a plant in, we don't want that to be seen that we're not cooperating.
Looks, looks a lot better.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else?
Have a good holiday season. See you afterwards.
I, I feel we'll see you before then.
Yeah, thank you.
Here, if you guys want to take. Just waiting up to spend the money on more homes.
Yes.
Public comment number two. Anyone want to make a public comment? Um, see anything else, any other?
I make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
Discussion.
At eight-ten, for the record.
The only thing I will say is, it's been brought to my attention that last week, I stymied one of my fellow Board members from taking, making a motion, and I want to apologize for that. Other than that, any other discussion?
Could you make that in capital letters on our?
Kevin admitted he was wrong.
Right. Could you please?
I'm not, I'm not above making mistakes.
Wrong before.
Anyways, with that being said, motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye. I'm moved.
I did, come on, come on now.